Okay, we'll bring the meeting to order and we'll start with roll call. Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Toni Corby, not here. Tina Sather.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Bruce Raboyne, not here. Roxanne Schoestead each, here. Joanne Smith.
Here.
And Beth Ramon.
Here.
And we don't have a student now, so we will now have the pledge.
Right there.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Are you guys, is Mike's on? Okay, Toni Corby is here now. And, okay. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we are now at...
Roxanne, would you like a second?
Yes. Tina.
Tina, oh, sorry, I didn't hear.
Okay. Alright. And now, are there any people who would like to speak? What we're gonna do is have two to three minutes to speak. And so, please raise your hand if you would like to talk. Okay.
At the end of your meeting?
No.
Right now.
Could I have your name?
June.
June, alright.
June, would you like a microphone?
No. Probably can yell out enough.
Okay. Go ahead.
From here? Okay. I know I'm gonna go to the referendum thing after this as well, but I guess I wanted to bring to the community that's watching this as well. I'm not sure I understand the additional headcount or payroll that we're adding for an administrative assistant to the superintendent. No disrespect to you, but why are we starting, what roughly, a nineteen thousand dollar job plus benefits at this time when we're asking people to pay additional funds and pass a referendum for school expenses? I know this is administrative versus buildings, but if you have extra monies for that, why do you not have extra money for buildings?
Okay. My understanding is that's for the replacement of the barb. And so, it is not a new position. It's just that the barb has retired.
And will this person be solely an assistant to the superintendent? They will not help with any other administrative costs or tasks that could make them a broader employee for the administrative part of the company, business, school?
Do you want to address that, Beth?
Sure. So, what I can tell you is this position has already been slated in the budget for this school year. But one of the things that I was very conscientious about when I spoke to the board is that we make sure that we figure out what the actual need is in the role to assist the superintendent. So, the starting place will be two days a week, three days if needed, which will be kept under a certain cap for hours. So, this position will not have benefits. So, we're keeping it to the bare bones because I will be very conscientious in how we spend the money. Two days is what we will start with and we'll go from there based on the need.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I just add one other thing, Rob?
Sure.
Typically, dollars, and I didn't understand this until I got on the school board either, but a lot of times the dollars that are allocated for capital expenses, such as buildings, are separate from what is allocated for standard costs. So, even if we did have the money for a person, it's not like that money could be taken and allocated towards capital expenses. Does that make sense?
I somewhat agree.
It's all legislated.
In what you all have for your budget, but maybe when you did future budgets, if I could respond to that, you know, there would be a place there where you could be pulling back some monies that could then be reallocated, I shouldn't say reallocated, but designated to other expenses. So, I totally get where you've got a budget and you feel you have to use that budget for what it was allocated for. I somewhat disagree with that methodology, but I get where you can't just bounce money.
Right, essentially, the law that it has to be spent. If it's allocated for capital expenses, it has to be used for capital expenses. It cannot be used for anything else.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? No? Okay. We will now, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Where are we adjourned?
What are we adjourned to? Oh, I have the wrong agenda. I'm looking at the six o'clock meeting. I'm sorry. Okay. Now we're at Mrs. Riebord. Mr.?
I'm just gonna start right at the top.
Oh, your mic is in the way.
I think you're too far away.
Hello?
I think you're too far away. Come over this way.
Oh, too far in the room?
Yeah, I think you're too far away.
I didn't mean too far away. No.
Okay. I'm gonna start with reviewing some updates with you guys for the... Just kind of see where we're at with that. The Red Act, as some of you know, was signed into law on May 24th of 2023. And the goal of that legislation is to have every Minnesota child reading at or above grade level every year, beginning in kindergarten, and to support multilingual learners and students receiving special education services and achieving their individualized reading goals. The Red Act replaces what we used to have, what was called the Reading Well by Third Grade. So, there's several different components to the Red Act and they do update it frequently because they're kind of building the plane while it's flying. So, one of the things that we needed to have done is to select screeners for K through three from two approved screeners that were on the state's website, and that was Cadence Dibbles or Fastbridge. And we had already selected Fastbridge probably about two years ago, so we are gonna be in our third year of using Fastbridge here at Falls Elementary School. And the high school will be in their second year of using Fastbridge this school year coming up. The state could recommend something different for grades four through twelve, but right now, they have not come out with anything different. At the elementary school, we are going to continue using UFLY for our foundational skills curriculum, and that's like our reading awareness and phonics. We have a training that will happen October 7th for our teachers, and we will also have some of our paras included in that training. And like I said, this is our second year of implementation for UFLY. The elementary school will also receive training this year in writing called Think SRSD, and that training will happen on August 27th. And then we'll have ongoing training for that writing process throughout the school year. We eventually will be choosing a new literacy curriculum, but we're kind of waiting. We wanna wait till everything is kind of out there and done as many things are, as well, being parsed, the science of reading and the research happening. So, we'll just continue to review different curriculums over the next year or so until we are fully transitioned over to structured literacy from balanced literacy. So, this, there's phases for training, and Phase One is all, is the K through five teachers. Some places, it's K through six teachers, depending on how you're set up. It's K-12 interventionists, K-12 special ed teachers, and administrators. Now, our building finished Letters Volume Two last school year. So, all of our pre-K staff are trained in Letters early childhood. Our K through five teachers are trained in Letters Volume One and Two. Our Title I teachers and our special ed teachers at Falls Out have completed Volume One and Two. And our speech language pathologists are trained in not only early childhood letters, but they are also trained in Letters Volume One and Two for K through five. And then, in addition to that, we have, there are four of us that are trained as local letters facilitators as well. So, that's myself, Kim McDonald, Joy Hamilton, and Sean Johnson. We have new staff that will be coming on board. Any new staff now coming on board at the elementary school will have to take part, and you are able to choose three trainings from the state core. There was one training you could choose Letters or carry-on, and our district chose Core just because it's an abbreviated version of what we learned in Letters, but it's not as time-intensive or as costly. So, that would be three hours of synchronous training, and that'll be virtual, like with a cohort, and we have those days scheduled. And then it'll be forty-five to fifty-four hours of asynchronous training for those teachers. There will be a stipend that Beth and I will get together and Lisa and talk about how we want to use that maybe because it's also used for other things like subs for other reading training and things like that. But there is one-time money that's designated to schools to support that training and then to support the teachers that have already been trained. So, this year, we'll have the new hires from Falls Out will get that training, and then we'll have the special ed teachers from the high school are signed up. That's Norm, Heidi, Michelle, Maria, Wyatt, and then Steven. And then our reading intervention teachers, like I said, that will be a new hire here, for a title teacher and Rosa. And then I'll have a first grade teacher that needs to join that crew. And then next year, we'll start Phase Two, which will be our sixth through twelve classroom educators, anybody responsible for reading instruction, teaching Minnesota language arts. Art paras will also be required to have some training, but the state is still kind of up in the air as to what that looks like. The most who've kind of told us now is that the training is to be provided by our service cooperatives, and it's not to exceed eight hours. So, that'll be upcoming when we figure out what that looks like. Each district is either supposed to hire a literacy lead or contract with a literacy lead by August 30th of 2025. And the co-op are having literacy leads that are gonna work with districts. However, it benefited us to use our money that we got to hire our own person when we actually selected Jody Hamilton to do that. So, she's actually part-time special ed and part-time literacy lead. And by doing that, we were able to hire an additional title teacher because it freed up some Title I dollars, which was very helpful. And the reason we went with hiring our own literacy lead rather than contracting is because really we are leaps and bounds ahead of the other districts. And so, if we rely on services from the co-op, we're really only gonna get like once a month some is coming, and they're gonna be focused on what these training requirements they need now for this small group of staff that we are training this year when the bulk of our staff is really done and we're onto new things. So, by using Jody, she can work with me in data correction and analysis, and she'll provide training, she'll provide your coaching. So, we can really get into those classrooms and make sure that things are happening with fidelity or like if teachers are struggling in a certain area, Jody can go in and model and that sort of thing. So, we will use the literacy incentive aid to pay for part of her salary. So, yeah, it's really beneficial when, especially when we realize it allowed us to hire an additional Title I teacher. Because we need to be, like, our intervention populations are still much larger than they should be, and so, we need to be able to intensify our interventions to work with more kids. So, that's helpful. The next thing, we're still...
You're gonna be refining our...
MTSS processes. Each year, we try to make things better.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, each year, we just try to refine things to make sure we're hitting every area we need to hit. This year, we will have a heavier focus on our Tier One instruction, and we also will have a heavier focus on our K two students, meaning we're gonna have to push in for some additional time in K two in addition to our wing time. And then we'll still have our wing time in Small Group and Three through Five as well, but we won't have staff flooding grades three through five during the Small Group time, only during our wing time. So, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is the state expanded the number of seats available for voluntary pre-K funding. As you know, we apply every year for voluntary pre-K funding and we never get it. But this year, our application was accepted, and we will receive some VPK funding, voluntary pre-K funding. So, they call it DPK, yeah. So, we will get funding for thirty-four seats, and that's equivalent to about point six ADM. So, and we're also allocated Pathway Two dollars again. So, this helps. So, Beth and I have been tapping into CISO. And so, with our VPK allocation and our Pathway Two funding, that's like an estimated one hundred and eighty-six thousand. I think it was like around one hundred and forty-eight thousand for the VPK funding. But, and that's great, but just to know, like, our staffing for preschool is estimated to be around three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. So, it's helpful, but it's still costly, right? So, really want her to come around? What's that? No, but once we get VPK, VPK funding, we'll continue to get it. So, yeah, so we'll have those thirty-four seats. I don't know that we'll be able to get more seats than that, but we'll have that thirty-four seats. And so, CISO just recently sent, Beth and I have spreadsheet kind of working on the figures, but right now, it looks like we'll have like an estimated deficit of about one hundred and twenty-two thousand. So, we'll see what that looks like. We're gonna meet with some other surrounding schools and see what they're doing, other dollars that they might be seeking out to see if there are options for us. And I mean, that one hundred and twenty-two can come from basic skills, and so, it's there. But it's nice. I mean, it's nice. It's too bad that our preschool kids are not on the formula fund like younger students are, but it is what it is. Like, we can't change that, right?
That amount that you pay for the, that we pay for the staff, how many staff is that included? Wouldn't that just be...
That's our three teachers and our three paras.
And it's three hundred and eighty-six thousand?
Wages and benefits, so.
Wow, okay.
We'll have your little bit hopes, right?
Yep, have your little bit hopes. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
And is Lisa West here?
Lisa's not here, but I do have a couple of things that I would like to share on behalf of Lisa. Lisa West is our new principal at Falls High School. She has taken the place of Tim Ederson, who is retired. She started on July 1st and has done just an incredible job. She is digging right in. Her focus this year is really going to be on MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support and core instruction. So, she is working with our staff right now and developing some goals around surrounding instructional best practices. So, that is, am I going out now? So, that is one of the areas that she'll be working on. In addition to, Lisa has been working with a number of different companies talking about a way to collect some of the data that is happening on student attendance within our school when it comes to student tardies or students missing class. So, we're really looking at some programs that are available to do some deeper level tracking at the high school level. She's also invested some time in going back to the foundational framework of PBIS. So, she is bringing a small team down to the loop in August. She's very, very invested in bringing PBIS back to the high school. And then between Principal Tate and Principal West, we will be looking at how we'll universally align that to the district as a whole. We've got some really great ideas. So, that's really where she's at a starting point. She's looking forward to coming to the meeting in August, but she is not with us this week, so.
Okay. Beth, do you have something for us?
So, I'm gonna start with the pool right now. It's still very busy with the community pool of the block today. So, I did, normally these came in and think to be fair, giving the pool open for them, and we did adjust some of our summer hours to a little bit later in the morning to try to spread some people out. This has been really busy. We need to broaden the pool. So, that's really good. But they are open, they are appreciative of our school, and a couple of members will come in and ask questions soon. We actually could, I'm gonna try and, something I've...
Something that we'll never do.
Swim lessons, we're gonna do swim lessons starting next week. They filled up less than two hours. So, we met with my instructor. I only have one instructor right now, but I bring in some swimmers and some of my life nerds, and they actually help with the lessons. So, we do have extra help there. We opened up Level One and Two for evening swim. It started to get pretty late if we did anymore just because those swimming actions, certain swim. Those filled up, like, within, I mean, they filled up. I mean, like, it was filled before I could really even advertise for it. So, there's definitely a need for some, I need more instructors and my staff to fill. But anyways, so those are starting. We have garbage training starting on the 29th. Those always fill up very, I mean, I think I have at least twenty right now already. Got most of the end of the year reporting done. I had everything done that was due this month. We have a big community report that's due usually in November, but I try to get done by the end of July, beginning of August. The staff in the community had, and Jody and I, we're doing the back-to-school packet. That will be done. We will be, I'm gonna try to meet with Beth this week and see how we can make this a more cost-effective for our school district. The back-to-school packets are very expensive. They're extremely expensive. And it's not really very expensive. We do have to get an extra body in there to help. And we really can't use like students because some of the back-to-school packets, we do have some private information that goes in them to certain parents. So, we do need to, I've talked to other schools, saw what they do. Sometimes they have a link on their Facebook or on their school website that said "back to school," that has certain things. It's one of those things where we just have to kind of, we learn where to get our information from. But I have kind of did a use, talked to parents that I knew, like at National Night Out, that was one of the ones that we talked to, the parents come up, we asked them what their school had. A lot of them don't think it's very useful. We did bring back the calendar for K, K purchases calendar. So, that does go in the back-to-school packet. That has been very well received. We took out athletics because we know that that's gonna be moving toward in the spring. So, we don't have that. But we obviously have the information where they can find that schedule. And we have all the non-school days. We have, you know, the beginning of the semester, the end of the semester, that kind of stuff in there. So, that's conversation that we have with Beth coming up shortly because maybe not this year, but definitely going to experience. It's, when I realize how much it costs for us to send them out, I think that we can do better.
We had a link and then had some hard copy packets available for pickup when people wanted to sign.
So, the Minnesota School Board Association actually gives, like, they have very good information, and they tell us what has, some stuff has to physically go. There are some stuff like, I believe, the free reduced lunch, or free reduced form. I believe that's one of them that physically has to be sent out. But I know the school district that my data was in, they just made all the calendars, and that's in the calendar. So, there's different things. I think we can be creative, and I think we can ease in some money. And it may not happen this year. We are ready to go with the regular back-to-school packet. We're ready to start. Angela is extremely organized. She works with Michelle Hopkins to get the private information for it. It's her. She, she really helps with giving us the organization profile and stuff. So, she does a really good job there. And it's really made her a good job. She's excellent. So, I appreciate of her because I couldn't get that packet.
Something that is mature, some of us have.
So, we are going with that, but we are going to have conversations.
Good.
Get more creative. Talking about Angela, our Adult and Disciplined Program is still going really strong. She just, Michelle Bolt contacted her about having that group used to go to, used to call the Dungeon at Bakers, where they would have dances. Now, it's called, I might be misquoting that, but it's called John Faith's Little Theater? I think that's what it's called. I maybe missed quoting that name. So, they are going, gonna start doing dances down there. And so, they're gonna do that tomorrow, and we have hiring extra staff tomorrow because there's that need for learning. And Bakers is providing kids on pop and the dance for them. And I think she'll overturn that at her time, so. So, she's very excited about adding that back on. And I do have one of my life nerds that just graduated, and she helps with the PALS activities, and she loves it. So, the only other thing, I haven't had a chance to meet with Beth yet, but you do have someone who says that we have some outstanding bills from our preschool program or urge to have a child type of education program that we need to kind of assign who's gonna take charge of that and just cover like the back-to-school packet. But otherwise, everything's really on a work group going on. Anything else?
Yep. Thanks, Jen.
Okay, thank you. And Beth?
Well, I'll try. Let's see how, how good this goes. So, I just have a few things I want to just quickly highlight, maybe more than a few things. I just want you to know that in the last two weeks, things have been fast and furious. I have started my work on my hundred-day plan that I submitted to you. I've met with a number of different groups, a number of different community members. I also had some great conversations with local business leaders, have really started to push myself out into the community. I also have met with a number of staff within the district to just do some listening sessions. And next on the docket, I will be moving to our directors, where we'll be spending some time really digging into the work that they're doing within our school district. I'll have an update for that for you on a more current update when we come together for our Word Retreat. Second, I have on the docket is the referendum on what's been happening. As you know, I am the leader in putting the information out into the community. So, I have been doing radio spots every Monday morning, but I opted to bring somebody else that works within the school district who specializes in specific areas so they can speak more to the areas. So, Tom Bolt has been there with me. Principal Tate has been on a radio show with me. Principal West, we're getting ready for athletic director and football coach to be present because I think it's really important that the community not only hears from me, but they hear from the people actually doing the work. That has been very positively received. Received a lot of emails, and people really appreciating getting others involved in the radio shows, hearing the referendum. Speaking of the referendum, I want to bring you back on the current fish fight that Purple Pride just held last week. It's one of the most successful that they've had to date. They ended up, we ended up running out of meals at about sixty, we served six hundred meals, and raised a significant amount of money for the Purple Pride and ISD 361. We got a number of local people volunteering their time from law enforcement to our athletes, our cheerleaders, community members. It was, it was just remarkable to see the community come together. It was a pretty efficient line. People were very positive about the referendum. A lot of great feedback that we received. And I just want to thank everybody from our sponsors to our staff and community who did show up to support ISD 361 and the Purple Pride program. It was, it was just something that we've seen. I have not been a part of it, and it was remarkable. Next, I have, we're, Ms. Tate, Principal Tate. Principal West and I have talked a little bit about reaching out to the community and holding an open meeting to bring back our parent involvement committee district-wide. So, we are looking at investing into reaching out to some of our local parents and bringing in for open conversation how we can revitalize that opportunity to bring our families and give them reenactment in our school communities for both elementary and high school. Next, I have, I just want to let you know that ISD 361 does not have a formal school safety protocol in place, which many districts do have across where they work with a specific organization. So, I have reached out to two different companies that I'm just pointing for informational purposes on inquiring on the protocol and the framework itself. So, over the next week, I'll be meeting with the organizations called ALICE, Alert, Lockdown. It's an acronym. I'm working with them and also working with another company just to hear about their program. It is called "I Love You Guys." Because the security is so important in school districts across the United States. And it because the security and um is so important in school districts across the United States. It is something that I do want to investigate. I'm not saying that this will happen. It's some information that I want to collect and bring to the board in the future. The other area that I'm looking into right now is ISD three sixty-one does not have a formal teacher observation framework um to align to the work that we're doing um regarding our practices within our classrooms and throughout our district as a whole. So I am also working with frontline to investigate on some of the um frameworks to align to the work that we're doing in our classrooms with our students in addition to the IT unit staff within our buildings, from um speech, speech therapy, um to our building principals and our superintendent. This is all just for informational purposes that I've gathered and to provide data to as a board. The next thing I have on the list is uh Principal Tate, uh Principal West and I are set to meet bi-weekly as an administrative team. And then on the off weeks, I will be with each principal individually and we'll be talking about their cycles and the work that they're doing. I do want to recognize one more time um the work that Falls Elementary has done regarding the REACT um led by uh Principal Tate and her team at Falls Elementary. I need to tell you that I've worked with twelve districts over the course of the last nine years, and Falls Elementary is probably ahead of the game more than the other districts that I've worked with. Um so I think I just really want to highlight that, but I think they are going to do some incredible work moving forward. And as we continue to start investigating this year, Principal West is um just now rolling out her investigative work and looking at the REACT component requirements for middle and secondary. But I again just want to highlight the work that Principal Tate and her team has done. Um last but not least, I just want to reiterate some of the priority goals that I have is the student enrollment. I know that's been a significant concern for ISD three sixty-one. That is something I um have on the docket to start doing some focus groups and starting to pull some data. I have access to students who've been enrolled with ISD three sixty-one, so I will have that data access. And I will be able to um collect that data and I will be able to reach out specifically to those families. But in our um opportunity to come together in at our retreat, we're going to have to talk about some other ways to reach out to people who don't um don't access IS, ISD three sixty-one. But one of the things that I I have talked to Roxanne about is, you know, we have to really continue to focus on priority areas, whether it's through the referendum and the strengths of our staff and really be looking at how are we going to sell our school as one of the best um facilities, right, to access and education. And that is whether you're on track to go to a four-year college or if you're on the track to going to trades. Um and I think we have some great things happening in our school and I think we can do better and highlight that. Um to close it up, I just want to say that there, I know that there has been two areas concerned that have been brought to the board. And I appreciate those of you who have reached out to me so I can intervene from a superintendent perspective, so we can start kind of through that hierarchy first. One, I know that you've been contacted regarding a stop, a bus stop location. I want you to know that I have spoken to that family and I am working with Tom Holt and revisiting what those um maps look like. And I just hope that we allow to go through that process before we take it to the board for possible board action. But just know that we are working on that behind the scenes.
Can I say one thing about that, Beth?
Sure.
As a school district, if we're going to op, if we're going to advertise door-to-door service for those preschoolers, then we got to back it up.
Yep.
So that's my feelings on the matter.
Yep, and Tom and I are looking at those, the maps, of what that delivery pile looks like. And we'll also be looking at the students who are riding that route.
Good, thank you.
Because I know that there are questions surrounding day players and the access that they have.
Yes.
So just know that we're working on that. Uh the last one is, we do have, um and we'll talk about this more at the retreat, since we're doing some investigative work. We do have a a number of people that are concerned about the volume of animals that are on our fields and grounds during sporting events that are not service dogs. Um so that has been brought to my attention. There is um statutes regarding service animals that we do have to adhere to. So I will be bringing that forth once I do all the um background research to make sure we're on track and following state statutes. That is my update for today.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Okay, now, uh I would like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now. Action items, uh under the concept of improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Um we have the following resolution. Uh does anyone have a copy?
I do.
Thank you. All right. Whereas School Board Policy seven oh six establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs to give certain donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute four six five point zero three states, the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools ISD three sixty-one accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the district. Um may I have a motion to present this? Okay, and now I'm going to uh read it. The Arena Scoreboard sponsorship. Uh border boxes, two hundred and fifty dollars. Northland Counseling Center, five hundred dollars. Okay, and um now we have uh this one, I can't remember. I'm sorry, we have a, we're not having a roll vote, roll call vote, but um so all votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now under action item number two, under the concept of maintaining our facilities to be welcoming, safe, and efficient for use by students and the community, um resolution adopting the school district's FY twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six long-term facilities plan. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Um oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? All votes in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now, uh may I?
Oh, we're just at this last attachment.
Okay, so do you have a seat?
It's here. It's, yeah, it's in our Hakkus, yeah.
Okay.
Nope.
Concerned about that? Okay, uh may I have a motion to adjourn?
Rox, here, I think I can read this. I'll just.
Yeah, I think I can read it too.
This one?
No, it's for the long-term facilities plan.
Oh. I'm sorry. Okay. Whereas to qualify for long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota Statutes twenty twenty-three, section one two three B point five nine five subdivision four states. A school district or intermediate district must annually adopt and approve a ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan by July thirty-first for commission or approval. Whereas the school district has to go up to ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan consistent with this law. School board member, we had the motion, who was it? Who? Dale. Um moved to the resolution adoption, and the motion was seconded by?
Jessica Mead.
Jessica. And upon voting there on the following, voted in favor of the motion. This, you, this is a different wording than we usually do, but anyway, uh I guess we have to have a roll call vote, even though it doesn't. Usually we have a roll call and then we have a spot where we can write down the names. Is someone keeping track of the names, Lynn? Okay, all right, uh let's start with Sam. Jessica?
Aye.
Tina? Rox says, aye, Dale?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Joanne?
Aye.
Okay, uh and there are no people voting against. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of International Falls Public Schools ISD three sixty-one approves and adopts the attached ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan for FY twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six on July fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. Okay. Now, uh may I have a motion for adjournment?
Um, I'll second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.